Ready? Before we start, as always, cell phones placed on the side of the phone. Okay, here we go. This page is not called a word. A record meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierce, Texas will be held on Tuesday, July 16th, 16:13 at 37 p.m. at the Pierce, Texas City Council of the Pierce, Texas. For the record, Mayor Protem, Valdez, Councilman Carrasco, three hundred and back, Councilwoman Ariza, Councilman Nieto, Councilman Nades, Councilwoman Yerriado. I just put it already, I did receive a call from the Council about this, that we would have been taken. Item number three, can you please rise for the presentation of the Council's report?
He's down there.
Anybody from the audience like to use a prayer? Mayor Proscen, come back.
Sure. Father. Good evening, Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight. Blessings for the City Council that's about to make some decisions here tonight that should be for the betterment of the community. We ask you, keep them in the prayers, give them that Saturday to make those right decisions. You got it? Amen.
Amen. I believe in this two for life in United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Mayor. Item number four, students to be heard.
Well, good evening, thank you everybody for being here, and as well, we're just coming by today, we presented the, we were talking off in a period of weeks in the chamber, so we've made a copy of everybody that I've prepared with the budget and the thing that we requested from the council in time. And then question that I would be asking.
Thank you.
The rest of the numbers and all that we came up with, you all wanted, whatever you want.
Thank you for being on this report.
Yeah, and hopefully, as we continue with this, we'll get one bit better.
That day, Phil, I was just recording. You just were looking on the screen back, thank you for that. What about Mr.? Okay, anybody else?
That was, that's always why we exist.
Actually, I'm agenda, I haven't seen this one. Item sixty, management reports, if you'd like.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I hope that the City Council and members throughout the community are looking at the various projects being made across all lines of operations, including streets, water, gas, and we're working on trying to do better in every area of operations. So, the other things I did want to mention, had to do more with a special report that I sent you here recently, to talk about a grant that we're going to be pursuing in the Council, the Brick Home Networks, that gets funds from PDA-CA to spend in communities for people that could benefit from the replacement from an existing home with a new home, people that certainly have to fill the low-income criteria of where we're going to be pursuing the number of different frameworks. Secondly, in regards to the commercial development, the months of August and September, I expect we're going to begin to hear more about tax increment financing, the program that the Council adopted back in 2011, a program that we hope through counties can adopt at the end of July, that allows us to create more quality commercial development, so you'll be hearing more about that. Transportation, I think there are many people that thought about the need for additional public transportation, we're looking at ways that we can begin to use a little bit of hotel occupancy tax for those kinds of purposes, so that we can connect commercial uses of trolleys to maybe some residential uses, we're hoping to find a manner to access those funds to deliver a broader base of public transportation services to the community. Downtown redevelopment, we did have a, I thought a great meeting with the Chamber of Members of City Council, Mayor Protem, Valdez was there, Councilmember Ariza was there as well, and so it was an opportunity for us to begin talking about hotel occupancy tax, what it means, how it's currently being used, ways that we might invest it better, so as a result of them producing this report, I appreciate it, and it has been responsive to our request, and we've got a number of other things that we're beginning to look at, so I think they're going to be hearing more and more about how we're using this hot tax fund to make some very strategic public investments that I think all the community's going to be very happy with. And, let me see if there's anything to follow. Calendar, TML training, July 26th, I think there are a couple folks that interest in going, so anything we can do in addition to what Andy's already done in arranging that transportation, please let us know. And we are calling a special meeting on Tuesday, July 30th, preferably around an hour to talk about TML insurance healthcare benefits that have been changed, we didn't have enough time to put it on the agenda without looking and making an assessment, and there could probably be a couple other items, but I would expect that it will only be about analogy on July 30th.
I have a question, in reference to the bill that we had from the attorney Bobby Momo, I spoke with you earlier, it's just been bothering me a lot, it was forty-four hours, forty-four point six hours of time that Bobby Momo charged us at fourteen thousand five hundred for forty-four hours. That's already been paid, but I know there was a resolution made on December 27th of 2012, that we would be getting no more, we would not be using that no more. Since then, it was used, it's just, could you explain that? Because I know the council, the previous council only had Bobby Momo now for two different situations, and on here, it was a lot of different things, majority had to do with the ESD.
Yeah, the majority of expenses, of course, is related to the emergency services district ESD, and...
Was that approved, or was that just go ahead and call it?
I think there were certain items that there was approval to proceed forward, and then there was, I think there's some items that are questionable. It's something that the city attorney and I have been talking about, and I think based upon inputs from this council as well, being the president in transition of council, to assure council that we're not using special council anymore unless directed by the city attorney, so, you know, we're back to reconcile some things that were already done, like, you know, I hope, I can only give you my assurance that in the future, there's no more of these kind of expenses. Certainly, I think we'll have to look a little bit more closely at, look at these particular bills to determine how we're going to get them solved.
Okay, because there's just a few on that I, I need to discuss, that they were not approved at all, so we need to go back on there and see when that person or people, you know, have called, that we've already paid the bill, but we can't pay that without council approval, but it's been paid, so we've got to go back to talk to these individuals and see who gave them the permission to call.
Yes, sir.
But it's fourteen thousand dollars for forty hours. It's a lot. But I do thank y'all for not going to that.
May I ask a quick comment? Tonight, I will be in court. I'm going to try to remind you of that day. So, I will be able to tell you.
Well, thank you, Councilman, we'll just, we'll schedule it for that meeting, you know, programmers only don't, don't make the meeting, of course. You know, we don't have a form of the election.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, thank you, Judge, for that. Okay. Financial update?
Financial update, in your packet, you've got what the finance directors provided as an update on the financial condition, the city will see page number one, the full cash account, the relevant, we're carrying all of our accounts and making payments on our account. So, we're pretty good, we're in reasonable condition based upon, just in the past couple of years, we also have in the report, a recap snapshot of the general fund, water fund, gas fund, and crash fund, so, in general, I would say that the community's doing better. I think it's been a function of finer control, surface expenses, and we're doing a lot better job at that, and certainly, I think we've controlled a number of expenses related to personnel costs, so, we've been able to contract someone to work out and do some temporary work that is a lot of sensational money, because we haven't had to pay for benefits.
Is your dog doing that or in the common area, or are we in the process of...
Yes, sir, I think that a recommendation's been made, and so we'll be talking about that funding decision in Portland.
The utility propositions have been...
We're in the process of hiring those folks, and Mr. Croft is here, but it's been involved in leading that recruitment process.
We're just, it's just dependent on physicals, and of course, background checks, man.
We'd love to, City Engineer, please.
Mayor Protem, this is Director Robert Viall of NMB, all projects are running on schedule. I know there was a question here about Pervino, and Eddie, and Visa, and everyone else, but not TSB. I really thought there and looked at it, and there are some, I was a hundred percent satisfied that there are some that approach the council, and they are going to address those issues, they're not competing, so we will address those issues. One of the items that I'll bring back to that council meeting is drainage on TSB, what adds underground drainage, since we do have the funds available, but I'll bring that up at the next council meeting, but besides that, if there's any other questions, we'll be asked to address it.
I only brought up those streets too, because, you know, it...
Yeah, I was not a hundred percent satisfied, I think there's some work that has to be done, and they're not...
It's a lot of money we're paying for it to look at.
Oh, yeah, I'll make sure it's done.
One other, one other question, I would like for you to clarify the, what the expectation is of the end result of the streets, because I think that there's a greater expectation than what's been committed to by the city.
Right, the initial, to give it our council, you remember the first time we put out this for a street project, it included hot mix that came in over budget, so we redid the project with two horse surface treatment, which is rock, oil rock, oil rock, so it's not a hot mix surface, it still should be smooth, it should look a lot better than what it does look now, so, but it's not hot mix. Mr. Currie.
Robert, do we have somebody doing inspections out there on the road that's raining down?
Yeah, Rick, I see, he's the one doing the inspections, and in fact, we went out there today, and we were both not thrilled, pleased with it.
Is that who was here earlier?
Yes.
Like those hydrants, and that we talked about, on the fire hydrants, we talked about the...
I have, the timber road is one of those where the city was supposed to be doing their own inspection, but I'll have you go way out there, and if you see something, I don't have a problem setting out there to address those issues, I think one of the firemen is, if they're too high, feel free to, feel free to call me, or, and I'll get with Rick for public supervisor bias, and we'll get over it.
Do we have somebody out there with supervisor bias, doing inspections, like water lines, sewer lines?
I think in this, in this transition that we've been going through, that we might have missed a moment, so I, you know, I think that we're going to be working a lot closer with the city engineer, and certainly with our teams, to make sure that we're doing the work comfortably.
Initially, we're giving up the city, we're doing all the other inspections, the timber roads, they're supposed to be down there to the city, both, you know, some of the issues that have arisen, the fire hydrants, things like that, I'll have Rick go out there more often, and just make sure things are getting backed out of there every day.
So, it's completed?
Exactly. No, not at the second, right now, the name is sewer line. They're about thirty percent complete.
Yeah, that street should have like a smooth finish, I know it's not black, but I've Googled the street.
It should, I would, it should be smoother than that. What happened, I'm going to go up, they dropped a lot more rock than they were supposed to in some areas versus other areas.
Yeah, because what I thought, it was like a dirt road, just plowed out.
So, more likely, what I'm having to do is, they're going to have to scrape off the whole, not there, shape it again, and come back and do the circle. At their cost, yes.
Pretty good? Thank you, Michelle. Okay, moving on to item seven, presentations and then special presentation items, item eight, open, written up. Item nine, the defense, it's pretty good. Item eight, all, item... Moving on to item, item B, this is a consideration approved by the county, requested by Matt Ordinary to use fifty knots all messengers on board, you...
Yes, sir, this is a recommendation that were another which I had before, with the dirt, so just, City Council, like, by this.
I don't know, I have to ask for the last one, Michelle, to kick it out.
Make your motion.
Motion for, approved by Matt Ordinary, to use fifty knots in case we can, what's remain of the other, the league, according to Councilman Nieto, on the right, motion carried out. Item C, this is a consideration approved for speed bumps on the 100 block of South Beach Street.
Well, I think this request is sent from City Council members, and I think we're beginning to look at those areas as to where best to place the speed bumps.
I called the chief yesterday, and you took it into it?
And I did, sir. Not only speed bumps, but the recommendation was made for lighting, more lighting, and it is an area that is very dark, and it's an area that needs to be more illuminated because of the nature of the activity in the area, so I would recommend at least two speed bumps and another lighting between Comal and Colorado.
What about...
Or if it's speed bumps or...
I want the...
I don't know the difference. The one that slows more, if it's slower, like the ones in front of your house.
I can just go straight through.
Yeah, the one in front of your house are bumps.
Yeah, I don't like those, but they work.
They work.
They have to work. They work.
So, Chief, have you done your study, or are you going to...
Well, I went by, I've seen it visually, I haven't written anything down, but just doing visual observations, and based on calls we've had in the area, the traffic on Colorado, and the running of stop signs there, it makes it dangerous. I can put something in writing for you if you'd like, or...
Well, the reason I ask a question is that I don't want, you know, other neighborhoods calling hay, I want speed bumps, that's pretty much all.
Then what do you got?
I got your help, I want one, a little version right next to my other person.
And one of them is...
I got to say, help them away. So, that's the reason I don't, I don't support the speed bumps.
Yes, sir, well, y'all make the decision, but I wouldn't be opposed to it, let's just say.
We started out there...
We started by the ballpark?
But the residents are requesting on this street.
Next to Beach Street, there was a child hit, I think, what, three years ago, on the block before Peach, Mulder, that's what they said before was, because they're not slowing down.
Can I ask a question, Mayor? The speed bump, you have the four-way speed, the four-way stop sign, the speed on Colorado, that would, the speed bump would be between Colorado and, what is it, San Marcos? Or, or would it be past Colorado? You see, you've got a stop sign there. And I can understand why the citizens want, they, that's why the citizens want the speed bump, because, actually, they, a lot of motorcycles running fast there, but, I, you know, it's, you've got a speed, you've got a four-way stop sign there, so, I don't know, if you put one on each side, you know, they stop in the middle of the, between those both streets, and then again on the stop sign, so...
Thank you. Okay, number, I did this, it's a motion, so...
I make the motion to approve the request for speed bumps on 100 block of South Beach Street.
Okay, then, Councilwoman, is that going to be one speed bump, or two speed bumps?
Two, we would take, I would request two.
Yes, sir, so we're gonna do two. Okay, motions that are being made by Councilwoman, we have two requests for two speed bumps. Okay, seconded by Councilman Nieto, members, any questions, if you can serve us.
Right, if it was beaten, could it be okay, just to that block, on South Beach?
I would recommend on Beach Street, one south of San Marcos, and one north of San Marcos.
So, we do equal, how many follow?
Between, between Comal and San Marcos? You're, you're going to go into some traffic, there's a traffic jam on, on Comal, that's what I was saying, you know, I wouldn't be for it if it's going to be put between Comal and San Marcos, you don't need it there.
No, I'm happy with the...
Maybe what you need is a cop over there stopping everybody that's going back.
Mr. Fox, is there any ladies here?
Well, we can help at it.
Okay, yeah, okay. Let's do this, or I have to know our conditions, we just walk back in, either contact, I definitely residents there, but, I mean, if you have to call, I would think you have to call, most of the leaders, so, I guess, we approve that one.
It's Valdez, it's block this.
Shoe shop, the shoe shop. The lady that was... Wallace, and they want contact with me, and they, they want speed bumps, and they want lighting, and I think that street has been neglected for so long, so I think you would just go through there to avoid going the other way. Yes, there's bars on that street, but we still have to, there's still, there's not a lot of residents, but there's still some that have been living there for many years, and they're requesting, or seeing a lot of traffic.
I think, I think right there in front of La Perlita would be a good, I don't think it would be, I think it should be to the north of Colorado, and to the south of Colorado, and that's where those people are requesting it anyway. Right there in front of the shoe shop, please. Because if you put it from the other street to Comal, you're going to have a congestion. Between Colorado and Comal, just once, and then that, because that would be a dead eye instead of two, then you get an address, it's a very, request, and it'll hurt me.
We need the other block, which is above, it's forward.
Okay, so, the, the motion will have to be permitted, Councilor, we have to go.
And then we'll come back and do another report.
Because you have, you're in Colorado, you're looking, you're in Colorado, and then you have a block, San Marcos and Comal, you put two, you got a four-way stop sign in Colorado, and then you're going to have a speed bump between Colorado and San Marcos, then you're going to have another speed bump between San Marcos and...
A lot of interesting part of this here, well, the AC's a...
Maybe even, maybe even Colorado and the street.
Right there.
Okay. So, that's what we got, we want, we're going to be wanting to approve the request, one speed bump. Okay. Councilor, you have to say, Mr. Ross, hey.
What about the lights?
Okay, so the motion to make by Councilwoman, the answer, the Councilman, the handle, members, any discussion, here, that, I'll try, motion carries now. Item B, this is a fair group, request a sheet likes that same box, same position, and our, what was that, the issue?
There's, there's a light on the corner of Colorado, and a light in the middle of the block, right by San Marcos, and then one on Comal. That's three lights, we can ask AP how much they charge to put an additional one across the street, on San Marcos maybe, or, I don't know.
When I, when I, there's no lighting, where Juanita, three wheels apartments are? Because I think there's a light by the...
I think that's...
No, you know what, no, there's, where the filita is, they have one, but it's owned by Roberts, might come, so they don't always have it on.
That's further north. Right there where Luca lives, I think, there's one, and then one there.
There's one that's owned, there's one there, but when that's off, and that's what Ms. Bettis was telling me, when that one's off, it's very dark.
They don't come on with a regular light?
No, it's owned by them, they put it up.
Oh, it's their personal light, okay, you can request one across the street, turn it, let's stay on with the regular lights on the street, street light.
Okay, item number mission, last, I think, this is all, this is not a word, I just have a word.
So, can we table it to mayor to talk about it the next meeting, or...
I'd like to take our permission, which provides table item ninety, what should they make by Councilman, go ahead, second, second, by Councilman, on the right, on the right, on the right. I'm just, because it's a cost of space, and make sure that it's, uh, no one has to register.
They're expensive.
We put in the other neighborhood for, for, on your initiative, Grace Street, there are lots of...
All right, Council, I have a motion to take over item ninety, what should they make by Councilman, go ahead, second, second, by Councilman, on the right, on the right. Item B, this is a fair group, change your number one to plug the old North Plant Water Well, New York Mon Street Water Well, question, twice.
Mayor Protem, initially, we were looking at using the old water well at the North Plant, the emergency well, the more we discussed it, we felt that the casing being in that shape, that it was the best to plug it, we have a contract with the Kenny Drilling Company to plug the Comal Street well for thirty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. We discussed then plugging this other well, the North Plant Water Well, we have approximately 108 days to do that, and we abandoned it, so what I'm recommending is, and that well is a little deeper than the Comal Street well, and they're willing to do it at the same price, so what I'm recommending is that we change order, plugging of the North Plant Water Well into the Kenny contract, at that thirty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, and the funding will come from the water bottom.
Okay, on that, Mayor, you were telling me earlier that it has hopes.
The casing has hope.
A lot.
It's in that shape.
City managers, what he has allowed me to do was to hire three ladies to run the concession. And the way we paid them, we paid them out of the cash box.
Does it have to be ladies?
Excuse me?
Does it have to be ladies? He wants to work.
Make no difference, as long as you're there from six thirty in the morning till eleven o'clock at night. You know, so we just wanted to know if the council want me to still continue doing that or... I know that with my paperwork, the money figures comes to the office, to City Hall, how much we paid on that weekend. Excuse me?
Most leave of work will be from work. I mean, do you put up an average?
Generally, no. These ladies, you know, they've been with me, helping me out since we started.
And do they get paid?
Yes, sir. Out of the cash box. One gets paid ten dollars an hour and the other two gets paid eight fifty.
And what's the difference in price? Quite a difference in price?
None. Well, one is the one that takes care of the money. There's only one person that handles the money in the concession.
Thank you, sir. Member, my motion is... There's a member, there's motion for to approve the money for the involvement between the City Council's softball services and the City of Pierceville. Mayor, what's your main recommendation? Second, the councilman, and the question, can we have a fair ride? On the postman, which is... Sorry.
That's his brother-in-law.
One, two, three, four, five, four, one. Okay, I raise this discussion to the full right of applying action by City Manager, City Hall, on the 13th of July, on July 24th.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank the mayor and members of the city council for authorizing us to take an extra holiday off my extended holiday. I'm sure all the staff appreciate it. I know I appreciate it.
They didn't tell me.
So just looking for your man.
Motion to make by the councilman, the area, with the right of petition to the City of Pierceville, July 2nd. Not this. Members of the council, I am under I. Okay, last item of the agenda would be discuss and consider the questions to be heard by the Pierceville Fire Department. Between staff and leaders on issues, whether this is going to fall off all seven of the parts.
He left. Was it intentional?
No, no, no.
Mr. President, you're here representing the Pierceville Fire Department.
Myself and some members of the...
I see somebody who's applying.
First of all, we had, the main concern we had was adopted action a couple of weeks ago, and nobody notified us. Nobody notified you, nobody notified the Fire Department, and what are we supposed to do? When we hear from members outside, twenty-four hours after meetings going on, nobody knows what's going on.
Can you tell us what's going on? Can you tell me what's going on? It's your department. What are you doing?
We don't have a meeting. What was the meeting? That's what we're here for.
I would defer one of the questions to the council.
What's your question exactly?
Well, I understand that I was told that I'm no longer the chief. That was my personal...
Who told you that?
I came and asked, I had to come and ask the city manager. That's what, that's what got me involved.
We had an agenda item, we had an agenda item, possible removal of fire chief, pending indictment. We posted the agenda item, that's all the city has to do, is post the agenda item.
Why deny it?
We posted the agenda item, you guys are here. That's a petition notice. We're not required to give individual notice. That's to answer one of your questions there. The other one, possible removal, we didn't appoint, the city council didn't appoint a removal fire chief. That's within you guys, and we have meetings. And the issue was that you were indicted, and it was incumbent on you to come and tell the council, look, I got into jam a little legal. There's an ordinance that the fire chief responds or answers directly to the city manager. You never came to the city?
No, I should have did.
Okay. I gave him a copy, I gave him a copy of indictment since March when he got indicted.
The first thing I did was I sent him over to the city manager, and I closed it.
Is she here? I know.
This is...
Okay, wait a minute.
My family's done since then, next March. You know, I have the Fire Department, I have to answer to, and these guys are supporting me. And I realize what's going on. At a certain point, I have to sit down, but these guys are supporting me for now. And I do think that y'all have, if you have something on an agenda, you know, somebody's got to work on something else.
Well, how did you notice to be here tonight?
Because we put it on the agenda.
So we posted, and we posted an agenda notice, but were you given individual notice? That was my question.
I came and asked after I...
Were you given individual notice?
No, it was my responsibility. If I put it on the agenda, to come and find out.
But to answer your question, you said you weren't provided with individual notice, you don't have to give it.
Actually, I want to ask over here, Mr. President.
Our concern wasn't whether or not the city had a meeting and took action. Our concern was not being let in on the conversation. We're all volunteer firemen. I put in twenty-eight years of my time. Plus, I was put in twenty years, I got guys standing behind me, put in ten years. We just felt like that we ought to have some respect, the past, before you make decisions, the things that we have to stand up for. That's the only concern that I had, is that I wish you would have brought us in here and said, we have a concern with the chief. Let's discuss it. But, we're supposed to answer to the city manager, but if that's the city manager coming to the fire station, but it wasn't convenient for him to come to our meeting. We don't see a city manager ever. Sorry, but not just you, we never see a city manager at the fire station. We're not an item ourselves. We work for the city. We represent you, because we're volunteers, you don't have to volunteer. We can all walk out today and unite and fight enough fires. There's nothing here to bind us to it. But as you sit there, you have the responsibility to fight that fire, you know? I hope you understand that. And what I'm just, I want you to understand that, that it's not that you have a concern, we have a concern. But as for now, he is the fire chief until the men who support him say that he's not going to be a fire chief. Now, if you don't want him to be the fire chief, that's fine. The city ordinance, and I know what city ordinance says very well, the city has a right to appoint a fire chief. If you do not want the person that we provide for to be the fire chief, you're welcome to hire a fire chief. And we'll support the person that you hire. But if we have to elect somebody, we have to stand behind, then we want you to support that person. But if you can't, we understand, but you're going to have to hire a fire chief. Or you're going to have to appoint someone to be the fire chief. And if the men don't support them, we have another call. But we're here as city employees, we're unpaid city employees, are we not, Mr. President? Unpaid city employee? Well, we're covered under your insurance plan. We're covered under, not, sorry, we're covered under TML for workers' salary. So are we not considered unpaid employees of the city? Since we're covered under TML? So, we really answer to who?
What's qualification for fire chief?
What's qualification for fire chief? By who, which standard? We're volunteers for our department? If anyone, anyone who they elect to be the fire chief, because it's a volunteer fire department. Do we, do we sit around, do we discuss before we elect the fire chief? If they've had enough time and training, yes, we do. But it's a volunteer fire department, so...
I guess there's a question.
Yes. Takes the dedication to do something first. Here, first of all. And I mean, that's really the true answer, unfortunately. Well, we need to know, is he our fire chief? Or are we all hiring someone to be the fire chief? That's what we need to know. The Fire Department needs to know, is he our fire chief? We have, we have rules, and the Fire Department says that if he gets convicted of felony, he cannot be in the Fire Department. And I personally will go take you ready for that again. That's, that's the rules, it's not by law that as a volunteer fire department, he cannot be our fire chief.
I think that's what the recommendation needed. If you do the recommendation by our legal counsel to put him on the agenda because of the accusations, and that he was indicted, and him being, let's say it, representing the city of Pierceville, it would become a liability, you know, with him being indicted. Everybody's innocent until proven guilty, because I understand that. But we went by the recommendation of our city attorney that to make a recommendation to y'all...
But that recommendation is never going to date to us.
I think, I don't know, I'm fairly new with this, so...
That recommendation is never, we have, other than Mr. President, I've come to the top.
What we go have was a recommendation to remove him as fire chief. And he could still remain at the volunteer fire department until he is, if he's proven guilty.
Okay, so if you remove him as fire chief, who are you putting in this place?
Let me clarify that. You asked the question, is we got to remove him. Nobody removed the chief. It was possible removal. All we had to do was send it to you guys, you guys have your readings, post your agenda items, and have an agenda.
We have not been getting any from the city.
Wasn't Mr. President allowed into your office the day after?
And what did he tell you? That he had no idea?
Yeah, he said he didn't have any idea what was going on. Y'all had a meeting back there, came back and voted, and that was it.
I don't know that that's what I'm saying.
I have a witness.
Here we go again. However, I think what I've said is, there was a decision made by council, make a recommendation to you, and that's clear. And I think you knew that. The question, what I said is, that there's questions about, what is the role of a Pierceville volunteer fire department? There have been meetings that have been held, and my discussions with you have been pretty correct. You can't expect to go negotiate with a group lacking the ESD if you're not present, number one. If you're not present, guess what? The other volunteer fire departments, they're going to be speaking for you. So I, so my whole point is this, there's a lot of, there's a lack of clarity between what the city expects and what you guys are doing. And I'm of the opinion, we need to sit down and kind of talk through it.
We're doing, we're fighting fires, we're spending...
How you're organized, you know, right now, if I go, there are groups in the volunteer fire department that are giving money directly from the ESD.
Correct.
Why, why do we have to be, and I don't know, do you feel like you reported to me? Do you feel like you report to me?
Were you at the meeting?
Do you feel like you report to me?
Well, when I ask you this, here's a, here's a better question here. I would really like to know is that the city council before voted not to contract with the ESD? That was over with. And then I see that we paid a lawyer to do something when the city council finally voted not to contract with the ESD? What was this lawyer doing when there was a resolution that said we're not going to?
That's my expression, Mr. President, please quit forty-four point six hours.
I would like to know too, because the council voted that night, I know some of you weren't here, different council members. Council, we aimed at all, we told all, we didn't feel like it was a hundred, y'all voted not to negotiate with them and not sign with them. So what did we pay money for? Why are we open there negotiating when we decided not to?
That's my question.
That's a very good question. I would like to know the answer to it.
Forty-four point six hours, Mr. President.
We didn't go to ESD meetings because the city did not negotiate and did not contract with the ESD. So we didn't go to meetings, why did we go to a meeting when the city's not part of that?
You know, there's better transition in council. I would look to this council, and I think maybe it's the same process we need to follow as we did with, on another matter last week. Maybe we need to sit down and talk, follow, follow a plan, to sit down and talk and kind of clarify, what's the role of each? And where do we go from here? Because ESD has money that they've got, that they're wasn't ready to allocate. You know, they're there, we pay, citizens of Pierceville pay three cents per hundred to be delivered fire service. You're the independent contractor, that's what you're paid, that's what, that's what we pay for. We pay, ESD is a taxing district, citizens of Pierceville pay three cents per hundred to deliver fire service. What the ESD board has their own board. So, I just want to, I think it's a board, and we sit down there and kind of talk about how this organization works? And how do we get to achieving everyone's objectives? Because at the end of the day, I think that they're fine with the services y'all are delivering, it's just that...
You spoke with the ESD board?
I've attended several board meetings, I've attended several board meetings, and I've paid attention to everything that I did.
So, you do know that the board is not the same board who started all this?
Correct, it's been going for...
And I spoke with them today, and they want to contract with the city of Pierceville, the city of Pierceville. They want to get away from what they have now. Right now, they're contracting with the city, Fire Department, they're dealing nothing, they cut out the deal. They actually want to contract with the city, but they used to... If there's an emergency service district, yes, if they don't have to contract with us, they don't have to contract with Pierceville. They can do the whole thing, but they want to contract with the city of Pierceville, it used to be. The board they had before that one didn't want to cut the city out, they go to the Fire Department only, and take on your equipment. So that's why we advise the city that we don't think that the contract is fair. Now they have changed that, they would like to actually come back and negotiate with the city as for service.
Mr. President? Now that you have the hearing, most of your personal information, tell us exactly what you want.
What we want, we're looking for clarification on...
No, no, I'm talking about the ESD, what is it?
We don't want the ESD, we don't represent the ESD, we represent the Fire Department. We represent the volunteer fire department.
In terms of finance, I mean, in terms of, okay, budget, I mean, what is, what does it do for the city now?
What is the ESD doing for the city?
What is the Pierceville volunteer fire department? What does that create?
Yes, I understand.
What is supposed to be part of the ESD?
The Fire Department wants the city of Pierceville, the city of Pierceville has a responsibility to maintain a fire department, whether or not there's an ESD or not. In the charter, you must have a fire department. The ESD was voted in to provide fire protection in unincorporated area. That got changed from a rural fire district to a burning service district, so it did change that a little bit. Their, their main goal is to make sure that unincorporated areas of the county has fire protection. They have two or three ways of doing it. They can start their own fire department. They can contract with a fire department, then contract with a city that has fire protection capabilities. The citizens of Pierceville do pay three cents. They've always paid three cents, it's always been for firefighters outside of the unincorporated area, because the city of Pierceville must maintain a fire department. Now, yes, we can go to them and tell them, we want the money only from Pierceville. Well, if you tell them, why don't you fight fires in Pierceville, what is, how does that help them achieve their goal of fighting, of having emergency service protections out of the city limits? It doesn't, so they won't contract with you to that. They're going to want you to fight fires, not just in the city limits, but outside of the city limits.
So what do you think about the new board?
I think the new board has their best interest in mind. I think they really, they really want to fix the existing issue. The other board, they had some personal interest going on, and as soon as they got it all messed up, they had to tell them, I left them with a big mess. They're doing their best to fix it. They've asked us to go to the meetings and talk, but unless you're going to tell me to go to the meetings and talk, how can I go to the meetings and negotiate with the city? I'd be more than happy to go and help you, I'd be more happy to go with you, but I can't just go myself and say, this is what the Pierceville Fire Department wants, because we don't own anything. We have a organization of volunteers, that we own all equipment. Over a million some hundred hundred of equipment sitting there, that the city owns. I don't feel like you even had a way, I'm taxpayer. But we have to have a fire department in the city limits, and we don't negotiate with the ESD, and we don't with the ESD. The city's best to have a fire department, and you just have to fund it. About, how many? Eighty thousand dollars, and we never leave the city limits? And we start fighting fires outside of the city limits, and our last budget was a hundred forty thousand dollars. Look at the extra we take on, just to get back to our seventy thousand dollars. Is that necessary? That's not for me to decide. I think that we have something we can offer, but we're in a hard time fighting the fires that you still have. Everybody has a job, everybody works. Where are we supposed to be when nobody responds? So we're going to take on extra, extra area that we may not be able to handle, but that's something that needs to be negotiated out. But before, they did not want to negotiate with you. They have nothing, they didn't want nothing to do with the city. They said, we don't want anything to do with the city, we're going to go to the fire department, we'll pay you to fight fires. Well, we don't own anything, so where are we supposed to be? The volunteers are supposed to go out there, take money from them, and do what? But we have to go to the city. And if we don't go to the city, I'm not interested in being around and handling it. We can't have two government boards. We can't have you telling us, okay, you can buy this and go to them, and say, no, we can't buy it. It doesn't work. It's not, it's not good governance. So if y'all, if it sounds like the city manager wants to, to work with the ESD and take on more land, we can negotiate that, but if it's more than the Fire Department handle, we're going to have to tell you. We can't do it, how are you going to do it? I'm just being honest with you. I try to be honest. Do we have a hard chief? Because if we go, we're not going to fire.
You guys removed the last one.
You guys have a million.
What's your recommendation?
That's a fire.
I can't make it.
Well, we need, we need to know if y'all want to, you know, stop that resolution from being negotiated, that's what we want.
Well, last year, you continue negotiating with that attorney after the city said, no more negotiating.
With what attorney?
With the attorney, you know the attorney, Wilson?
Well, they keep sending me...
Well, and their emails, because they built Bobby Martin out of building the city. That was December.
But he was calling him, we didn't contact them. They got that, what else was weird is they keep getting saying...
Emails?
Do you want to do this, do you want to do this, and we're saying, but the city said we weren't going to do anything. And he said, no, the city hired me to negotiate. We didn't hire him, the volunteers didn't hire him. We didn't ask him to do it, but he kept asking us questions. Who's he?
The city, well, in December was no further negotiation, the resolution was...
Exactly, but then he, I see he's billing y'all, for what?
Some of the responses are from the chief.
But they were asked for it. Bobby asked him, we didn't go to him.
I didn't ask him to do it.
But the chief...
I do understand, but he got an email from him saying, what about this? He replied, because he said he was wanting to see me.
That?
It wasn't. Bobby Martin asked you, and you replied to his email, or did you negotiate, did you, did you, how did you say?
Every time there was a meeting, he would ask me about it, and that he was representing the city, but, you know, I never bear permission to do anything.
He wasn't working for us. He was working for y'all, he was working for you.
He was writing for this here, is because...
Well, because he wanted you to do it.
Okay, yeah, we did all that, but we're going to have to look into this, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask you. Because this bill was paid, it was fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. And this was in February, and everything that he has here is, the highlighted area is saying it's the fire chief. Okay, so this bill's been paid already.
But who, who, how do you say, who started the conversation with him?
Yeah, that's what we'll look into, because this bill's already been paid. This bill, it accidentally got through the water, and got came without the water, but we'll take that off that side. But we'll really get a look at this, and I ask you today...
I don't think you need a lawyer to negotiate with the ESD.
Yes, but I'm going to ask for an A on, if that Bobby Martin guy calls. Because I really think that guy is stealing from the city by, you know, overcharging this like this. Well, we already have our city attorney, and nothing was approved, other than two different situations that that attorney would address.
Well, we were here at the meeting, and the city voted not to do it.
But if they, if they contact y'all, I will ask if you could, if you can't get a list, the manager call me. And I'll be like, okay, don't contact him, put it on that email, and we'll send it back to Bobby that he's not to contact. Because that is a lot of money.
Sure is. We're on our budget for the Fire Department.
For one hour, he drives you three hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, but it's not his fault, but this Bobby Martin, Martin Law's thing, it's the city's fault. It's me.
I understand, but we have to look, see, you charge for an hour and pay, well, two hours and twenty minutes, three hundred and sixty dollars. What happened within that hour?
We know, we know where it came from, I'm, I'm, there was other council members, and we know where it came from. But it didn't, it did not come from the Pierceville volunteer fire department, I can assure you.
How much funding did we lose out, by pulling out of the ESD, out of volunteer fire department?
The city, the, the last time, I used to be the president of the ESD, so that's how, that's why I speak. I think the last time that we funded the city, we, they received around a hundred thousand dollars? A hundred fifteen thousand dollars?
So you pulled out of that ESD, now you're going to come to the city to fund it?
Well, the city, the city has to use the budget no matter.
Well, there's a budget already for the city.
We always took the budget with the city, I'm content to see that the ESD is going to pay extra money. We never got enough...
Max money plus the city budget?
We never got, we never gave enough money to completely fund the fire department. This is not worth it. The city always had to put extra money in, it's always had to be that.
Okay, Mr. President, I have to put in some money. By Elizabeth, I think we really need the ESD, because we need any money we can get. However, I know you just said that before they weren't working with y'all, I wasn't here, so I remember that meeting. I think I was sitting out here, but they had come to get rid of it. You said they have gotten better, that there's a new board there. Would you, like, I feel that we should reconsider.
We think you should too, we're trying to say, you don't need a lawyer for it. It's ridiculous, pay a lawyer.
I know, we don't need, we definitely need Bobby Martin out, that was, that was a waste of money.
If this council wants me, or you want him, I mean, I don't, I will be happy to help you. But what we're trying to make sure you understand is when we're here tonight, is that if you take on more than we can handle, we can't handle. So we want you to be very cautious in what you agree to. And don't just agree to without checking with us. Because if you do, you'll have, I'll bring you some buckets here, you're going to have to go take other calls. If we can't do, we can't do it. We're not going to go out there and say, yeah, give us this great big area, and then not fight the fires. It's not us, y'all, y'all signed the contract, why I sign it? We're a volunteer fire department, we're volunteering our time. Volunteer fire chiefs spends tons of hours on its own, actually spends tons of my hours because it works for me, doing the stuff that they work for the fire department, because it needs to get done. But I don't have a problem negotiating with them, I think that we have something to offer. I think they have something to offer, they have money to offer. It can't be this humongous, we're not going to get, we're not going to get enough money to completely cover this fire department, but... I guess, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
But you would be happy to.
Yeah, because, because no matter what, you would have to kick in the rest. I mean, the city has a fire department, or we just don't do it? I mean, that's something for another topic as well.
But that could happen, it happened in...
It always happens. It always happens. But the ESD does not have to negotiate with the city, they can start their own fire department. They can come in here and tell you, okay, we're going to lease your equipment, you give us all your equipment, we're going to take care of the fire department, say that. Be just like our EMS system is now. You don't want to get in that either.
I think if we get strong with them, with ESD, and work together, for example, we've done it with the Chamber of Commerce already, you know, everybody goes up different pages. And now we have met with them, we're all on the same page, and it's working, you're at least food.
Well, see, they're just, the other people had a different agenda, they were a contract...
Yeah, and I understand that, all that can be, I know what you're saying, that y'all are doing the work, and they're telling you, you're going to be more over. And you know you don't have a met up.
Well, no, it wasn't that. Before, they were a contract saying, have you ever, you spend any money on this equipment belongs to the ESD. They're going to give you all your foot, source.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
That's my pleasure.
One question to clarify, Lisa, do you guys post your meeting, your agenda?
No, because it's only, it's only for a member of the Fire Department, it's not a public...
You don't have to comply with the open meetings act?
It's just, it's just our members only, you have to take notes over there. You can tell us that it's not great, but you've never been, I've been there twenty-eight years, we have it.
You're receiving funds from ESD?
No, we're not, we're not receiving any funds from ESD. No, we've never, the volunteer has never received any funds from anybody. The city of Pierceville receives those funds, we don't. We don't receive any of those funds.
Your budget, that's one of them.
But not, the budget is going to the city.
I'll get with you on that.
We're not cutting, you need to understand that.
The city is funding your department, so technically, you're in the... You know, you've had to turn that as, as public, you know, so, provided by...
Yeah, but y'all are spending the money, y'all paying the bills, we're not paying the bills. Anyway, we can, we just need to know, if y'all can take action on something, y'all need to make sure to do that. If you're not going to let us know, you're not going to have respect for the job that you do, just tell us, we'll even hire a fire department. It's not a threat, I'm just trying, we want you to have respect for the time that we put in. If y'all are going to take action on something, call us, have the city manager come to the meeting, and tell us, we have a concern. We're all aggressive, we don't ignore anything. Because it's our lives that are in danger.
How often do you request qualification?
Anytime we can do that. Anytime we can do that.
Do you do the public meeting, or you just say, hey, can you help us speed you along?
Sometimes we put here in the paper, sometimes we just go around and find people.
Why, why'd you ask me about speed you along?
Um, I talked to you about one time at the store, and you told me it's too late for you to be down, I don't wanna say it. What did you tell me at the store? When you said, I wish, what did you tell me? You said, I wish I would have joined a long time ago, but now I can't do it. Well, I got new hip in my, in here, and I'm still trying to do it, because I think it's an obligation, I turn for the city. But I don't have to, see? I can go home tonight and...
Okay, very good. Um...
Those...
So we could, uh, who could choose? Kind of security issue?
For later? Uh, no? I mean... Well, I think that, I guess the recommendation, Mary, for us to get together, we could just kind of talk to where we're at, go, go from here, and then come back.
Some communication between the...
So you can, to us, to, 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 perhaps, are we the officers that you're making, you have to...
Yes, we, we can say you come to it. We'd be more than happy to have anyone, we, we asked the city manager to come, that's been this meeting.
Because it'd be good if one of us can, or all of us...
Well, you can't all come, right? You have to, you have to go there.
Yeah, but if at least one of us show up, then we could come and relate to the council, hey, they need to, they're going through this.
We would be more than happy to have anyone, I mean, they're left, but more than welcome to come. We're supposed to answer to the city manager, we expect to see the city manager every once in a meeting and say, hey, you don't like what you're doing, you like what you're doing, thank you for what you're doing, you look better, something.
Thank you, sir.
So you, you, well, if you're letting me know, if you, if you need me to help with the ESD, I'm willing to help. That's, I'll just put me out, I'm gonna decide which one. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Okay, one more question. Okay. No, I'd rather they part, do I actually do more? All right, very good. I have seen a few questions, if you have enough, a group would say, Bill, I... Members? Any questions? I don't have any more questions. Who did you all, you said? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? I have a second question, I got, you know, you know, maybe, what they go up here, I have a lot of more questions. Uh, before, uh, I don't think, yeah, I should have signed it earlier, because it's not going to be here. Chief? I'm sorry.
What I got, I did, I take it?
My radio, I'm gonna steal it.